And welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating your name and address. Seeing none, at this time I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. Counselor Cragan, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cragan?
Here.
Counselor Cruz?
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Here remotely.
Counselor Fleming?
Here remotely.
Counselor Green?
Here.
Counselor Schultz?
Here.
Counselor Squawea?
Present.
Counselor Ian Hasinga?
Here.
Counselor President Zarella?
Here.
Counselor Boishman?
I'm present.
Counselor Kuchar?
Here.
We have a full committee of 11 members present.
Thank you. We had advised the public to contact the Clerk's office regarding comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak during public forum, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address, and the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and then you may speak for not more than two minutes on that item.
Jacqueline Wedge, Pittsburgh resident, speaking in favor of Agenda Item Number 255-22. Thank you to Counselor Deena Tally for sponsoring our petition. Setting up a charter commission is work, but you are all paid to work for us. You're not volunteers. There's lots of precedent for electing a Board of Health. I gave you a list of the many communities in Massachusetts that do this, about half of those in the state. You'll notice that percentage-wise, there are more towns than cities, although cities have much larger pools of potential candidates to draw from. You'll also notice affluent communities like Lincoln, Sudbury, Wellesley, and Weston are overrepresented on the list. I don't know how it happened that in setting up sample city charters, the state of Massachusetts decided poor communities don't deserve the same voting rights, or places where more minorities live don't deserve voting rights. Some of you have even told me that you think we're incapable of doing a good job of picking our own Board of Health. We're not stupid. We can handle it. When I talk to people in other towns, they're shocked that the majority of board members don't even live in Pittsburgh. There's a lot of talk nowadays about critical race theory, and I get irritated when I hear it should be taught in schools, because the problem isn't the children, it's the adults. We put the structures in structural racism and structural classism to disenfranchise people in communities like Pittsburgh. This is a prime example. Everyone should have the right to vote for their Board of Health. Structural inequity should be fixed, even if it takes a charter commission. Please do the right thing and start the process by sending this to the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Yes, Arthur Jacobson, and I'm representing my daughter on Agenda 255-2. Is that correct? And again, my name is Arthur Jacobson, and my daughter is Jessica Jacobson. I am a Pittsburgh resident, and I cannot make tonight's meeting due to the conflict with my yonkumpor service tonight. I expect my position to be shared, and that a conflict with the scheduled meeting and my religious ceremonies will not be an issue, because that would be a violation of discrimination policies. There are a lot of us in support. This change then can be an attendance due to the yonkumpor work. Children support games, children, sports, games, and lack of childcare. I also want to know that, want you to know, that we will stop pushing for this, and we will remember who is against the people of Pittsburgh. Having a voice with the electors come. I look forward to watching this meeting after the service, and expect that you will actually represent the people who were elected to serve. We want change, and we want accountability. We don't want people who we didn't vote in, or who don't even live in Pittsburgh. To be able to have so much influence on rules concerning so many aspects of our livelihoods and the children's livelihoods. So just to be very clear, myself and my group are busy moms, want Pittsburgh to become a citizen voting position, and not appointed position, and want to see more accountability with our city officials.
Good evening, councilors. I just wanted to take this opportunity, oh, sorry, for the record, my name is Nicholas Erickson. I'm Commissioner of Public Works for the city of Pittsburgh. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the new Recreation Director that we just hired. As of Monday, he started. Last week, the Board of Parks Commissioners voted for his appointment. His name is James Bunnell, and here's James to say a few words.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. As Nick had said, my name is James Bunnell. I'm your new Recreation Director. I'm very excited to be here, to have the opportunity to serve the city of Pittsburgh. I would like to thank the Parks Commission, Jim, Mary, Mary and Dave. They've been great in helping me get started. I've been here all of, I guess, day one and day two, so here I am. I've got to, you know, tour a lot of the parks today. I'm very excited at the potential that's there. There's so much that's going on in such a positive way in the city of Pittsburgh that I'm just very excited to be a part of it and to further enhance, you know, the opportunities for people, members of the community from, for across all ages, to give them an opportunity to get out there, get involved, and be active. So, again, I thank you guys, and, yeah, if you need anything, I know my email's active and getting my phone soon, so I'll be available. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Robbie. I'm a resident in Pittsburgh. I was rather surprised, coming from Burlington, to come to Pittsburgh, to find out that I did not get to vote who my Board of Health was, to represent my family, my children, and all the children here in the community, as well as the adults. I really would like to see some change happen in Pittsburgh, so that we, the residents here, have more say-so, because we live here. The Board of Health does not live here. To have them dictate our medical history, our medical situations with our children, our grandchildren, your grandchildren, your children, and so on, is unheard of. These people, and also as far as Bognazerian.
I'm sorry, we're not going to take any personal criticisms of individuals at this time?
It's not a criticism. I'm not criticizing him at all, at all. I do, however, I did find out that he is, not only is he serving on the Board, but he is also the primary physician for all CVS pharmacies here in Massachusetts. I find that to be a conflict of interest. He needs to be removed immediately. And that is what I have to say. I really want to see you pass 255-22. Save our children.
Could you sign your name on the sign-in sheet, because I didn't quite hear it?
Yes.
Just so I could get it for the record. I know Mrs. Weddy, but I, I'm not.
I put a sign-in sheet up there, so I could.
What's your name?
Thank you so much.
That's why she has to sign.
Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Seeing no further comment at this time, we'll move on to our regular agenda. There is no report of the Appointments Committee at this time. A report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I'm second. Yes.
Second? Motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. One communication from His Honor, the Mayor, a reappointment letter to the Pittsburgh Housing Authority Board of Directors, term to expire September 2nd, 2027, of Mr. Dave Basilio. That will be referred to Appointments. Report of City Property, Counselor Cragan.
Sure. We met last night. I'm just pulling up my report. We met last night. We had a, we had a guest to speak on Habitat for Humanity, but the sum total of our meeting involved that we accept the 7 Third Street parcel, which does have a long vacant and dilapidated building on it. It is within our scope and economy to remove that and make it safer for the residents there. The plan is to do paving over, and please, Commissioner Erickson has, not in the room, anyway, if I leave something out, guys, jump in. Also that we are, that we are declaring Zero Maverick Street, which is behind Community Health Connections Early Learning Center, which many folks have gone to for preschool. The very large parcel there is, has been untended to since, our records went back to 1987, so Tom Skorowski mentioned that this was a property literally in limbo. So that for us to make the decision to put it out for an RFP was a decision we made happily. Kevin O'Brien came and spoke to us, and he represented Habitat for Humanity, and it was great to have someone there telling us that we are going to have two new homes constructed, one at Zero Tap Street, the other at 5050 Granite Street, and that the State Registry does choose the new owner, but that Monty Tech is on board to do the construction along with the new owner, and of course Habitat for Humanity. And Mr. O'Brien was very eloquent and said the provision of a safe, affordable house does a lot to lift a person out of poverty. So that covered our meeting. I don't know when our next one will be. It will depend on Tom Skorowski's successor. And did we cover everything, Counselor Van Hasinga and everyone?
Counselor Squawea?
Yes. 235-22 was three, was approved, three to one, Counselor Boishman against. 236-22 was approved, three to one, Counselor Boishman against. 245-22 was approved, four to nothing. 246-22 was amended to edit 50 Tap Street to 50 Granite Street, and that was approved four to zero.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion? Motion to accept. On the motion, Counselor Boishman?
Like Counselor Squawea to my right said, I'm totally against 235. I don't think the city should be paying $24,000 and then take down the building. I think the owner should take it down. It's $24,000. I know he owes back taxes approximately $57,000 to the city, but I don't think we should be doing that. On that, I think on 236, I honestly believe that we're moving too fast. On Maverick Street, I think that, I keep on saying it, I go back to Clegon and my ward, and what we did on Clegon Street, and we gave a parking lot away, and now different businesses have no parking for their businesses, and they can't sell their property because they have no parking. And on that, 245 and 246, I voted in favor of that, but I will ask again that if we're really that concerned about the getting the less fortunate people out at the property level, that these houses should be equipped with solar panels. In that way there, because you know, the power's going up 70% this year in Pittsburgh, and Leominster's 64%, and what better way to help these people, the less fortunate, by having solar power? And plus that, councilors, they'll own it. They won't lease it, they'll own it. Yes, maybe the price of their house go up a little bit, but they'll still own it. There won't be a PPA. They'll own it after, they say they make money after about seven years, it'd be clear after seven years, if you haven't done. So that's how I feel about it. So you know my record. No, no, yes, yes.
Counselor Squawea?
Did Counselor Boishman say it was $57,000 in back taxes? That seems fairly significant.
I'm sorry, can I have a withdrawal of the motion that is before us? Oh, withdraw. Thank you. All right. Go ahead. Mr. Skorowski?
Yes. So, subsequent to the meeting, there was some uncertainty as to whether or not back taxes were owed on the property, and it sounds like we both did our research today. You stole my thunder there, but yeah, $57,000 in taxes owed, and as I mentioned at the meeting, one of the reasons you accept a property in lieu of taxes is the tax title-taking process can take a really long time. 491 Main Street on the corner of Main and Oliver, we were working on that before. I was even working for the city back in my time at Reimagined North of Maine, so six-plus years, it can be a pretty long and painstaking process. And at the same time, we've got residents in the patch who have complained to us in the NICE Committee endlessly about this property. It's been a nuisance and a safety hazard for the residents in the area. So we saw this as an opportunity to expedite the process. We know in a case like that, it is a substantial tax liability. We know we're in all likelihood never going to see it. So although it sounds like we're losing that money, what we're actually saving in the time it takes to go through the court system is both time and money, and the ability to take this down expeditiously, to solve a problem for that neighborhood.
Counselor Deena Tally?
Yeah. Heard this explanation a lot in the past about why we don't go after these deadbeats, because it's going to cost us money. I mean, what message are we sending to people in the city when we say, yeah, this person, whoever it is, didn't pay $57,000 in taxes, and they're going to get off scot-free? What's the status of that? Have we pursued this deadbeat?
There have been extensive conversations with the property owner over the last few years, as there were some serious issues of squatting that created some safety hazards for residents in the neighborhood. And ultimately, this was the proposed solution to circumvent the court system, to allow us to take this property in a quicker way, essentially. But to answer your question, no, I mean, the only recourse beyond this is the courts.
I understand the position we're in. It just sends a, sends a bad message, whether it's unavoidable or not. It just sends a bad message. I get the fact that if we leave it alone, it's going to accumulate more problems, it's going to depress the values, but at the same time, it's like, you know, and we're in contact with this individual, so it's not like he or she is missing. You know, they're present. So we're going to take the property over, clear it up, that'll make the neighborhood happy, but at the same time, you know, all that neighborhood folks are paying taxes, too, and this person's getting basically a walk-off of 57 grand. Not a bad deal for whoever this deadbeat is, and I'll keep calling this person a deadbeat.
Thank you, Counselor.
I guess we're going to have to, we're going to have to support it, because we have no choice. I mean, what are we going to do?
Thank you. And can you just please remember to put your, thank you. Just a reminder. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, Tom, I took a look at that Phase 1 site assessment, and I guess there's no, there hasn't been any soil sampling done. Is that something we're going to do, because I guess the site may be contaminated?
Correct. So one of the tricky things when a property is gifted in lieu of taxes, as opposed to us taking it through the tax title system, is it does not necessarily remove us from liability for any environmental contamination that occurred, which is why with the NICE Committee's direction, we conducted a Phase 1, a document review, a site visit, and an analysis of the environmental conditions at the site. We found there, there could be, because of a fire that took place in, I believe it was 2006, 2007, there could be contamination such as lead and asbestos in the soil. Ultimately, in looking at it, we didn't think the levels of contamination were sort of outside the scope of what you might normally see on a residential property. Where we're often really concerned is, the Central Steam Plant's a great example, a site that has had an industrial heritage, that has the potential for significant contamination that can have cascading impacts on the parcels, and in the case of the steam plant, the river. We didn't think that was the case here, and we felt like the environmental issues we're looking at are not outside the norm for a residential property in an older section of town that has, you know, what we call urban field.
Because of the fire, though, was there, was there an estimate given on what it might cost us to clean up the site?
Well, there's a couple different paths you could take on what cleanup could look like, but one of the cleanest paths is to actually just pave over the site, and it basically caps the problem in place. But again, that's assuming there is a problem. No testing has been occurred, and certainly tests would be done as part of this demo process like any other that we do in the city.
So we might run into something later on, is what you're saying? We could.
We could. It's possible. But again, unless we're developing a house here, and it's not, it's actually a site that's not really viable for any type of housing development, anything, you'd have young children or anything like that, if you just paved the site over, that acts as, in effect, as a barrier for those contaminants, and is one method of cleaning up such a site.
Okay. Thank you. I yield the floor. Counselor Cragan?
I'd just like to point out that the owner of this property bought it for pretty much $80,000 back in 2010, so he is out that $80,000, which would be comparatively worth a lot more today. So just wanted to bring that forward. He is surrendering the property that he did pay for.
Counselor Boishman?
Yeah. You know, I get, the thing that sets me the most, really sets me the most, the NICE Committee acts on a property like that, but yet, I have a property, and I complained about it for, I've been on the council for eight years, and we couldn't do anything. We could do nothing. But yet, you get a couple complaints here, and you had a squatter living in it.
Counselor? We're only here to discuss whether we're accepting this property, not one of the ones that would have done.
I understand that, but the reason why this property came in front of us, Mr. Chair, is because the NICE Committee worked on it because they got complaints.
Counselor, Counselor, we're not here to discuss how it came before us. It is before us. Our only vote is to take it or not.
Well, I don't like the system.
Motion to accept. Second. I have a motion and second to accept the report of the City Property Committee. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection?
Counselor Boishman objects.
Oh, Counselor Boishman objects. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition?
Me, I'm opposed to.
Okay. Two in opposition. Motion passes by a vote of nine to two. Next, we have the finance, the report of the Finance Committee, Counselor Deena Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last Wednesday, September 28th, and took up four orders, 239-22, order that they're being hereby is transferred from within $6,802 from reserved for other municipal purposes, capital expenses, and credited to the library expenses, building maintenance, for the purpose of supplementing repair costs for the HVAC system. This is for work that's already been finished at the library. This was with the Myrad problems we had this past summer with the air conditioning system. The library had about $16,000 on hand, and it ran over about $6,800, so that's the difference that we're making up for the repairs. 240-22 was an order the city of Pittsburgh approves the expenditure of funds from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, grant for $150,000. This was to address issues regarding vaccine equity. So this is a continuation, a federal grant continuation in Mr. Curry's department for education outreach and holding more vaccine clinics for COVID-19 and the flu. It also includes the flu as well. 241-22 was an order, 241-22 and 242-22 go hand in hand with respect to the fire and police department dispatchers and medical and 911 emergency services. They're both grants that the city has gotten for many, many years that help supplement our budgets in the dispatchers departments within those two departments, and those were all adopted unanimously.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. And I did just want to remind councilors, after the previous report, but forgot, if I ask for unanimous consent and you do have an objection, please feel free to call out if I don't see your hand, because I need to make sure that I note any objections. Next, we have a report of the Legislative Affairs Committee. Counselor Van Hasinga filled in for me, and I'm actually going to step out briefly, because this is a matter I would have had to recuse myself from anyway.
So the Legislative Affairs Committee met September 28th, 2022, to hear Petition 10622. City Councilor Andy Van Hasinga, on behalf of Almusa Basma, trustee, owner of 339 River Street, to amend the zoning ordinance, Section 181.643 of the city code, to include the following uses: marijuana courier and marijuana delivery operator, and to allow the same in commercial district as outlined in the enclosed petition. When we first wrote our cannabis or marijuana ordinance in the section of the zoning ordinance, it was only for medical marijuana, and then the recreational marijuana was allowed, so it was amended to create that. And since that time, marijuana delivery has been allowed by the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission. So what this petition does is start the process of, or it does amend our zoning ordinance to reflect the allowance of this use. This proposal was approved by, or recommended for approval by the Planning Board, and it does have the support of the Planning Department, and the committee recommended that it be adopted unanimously.
Move to accept the report of the Legislative Affairs Committee.
Is there anyone in opposition? One in opposition? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Speak on the motion.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Fleming, I did not see your hand.
Okay, okay, that's no problem. Just quickly, so this is, is part of what we approved with the eight retail, right?
So no, this was not an allowed use in the state when we wrote our sections of our zoning ordinance for retail cannabis use. Since that time, this is now allowed in the state. So what this does is amends our zoning ordinance to include this use.
So when you include this use, does that mean there would be more retail uses, or the current?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. This is a separate use that which delivers cannabis products.
For the already existing places?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Start your petition over again. Counselor Squawea?
To clarify Counselor Fleming's question, it doesn't deliver to existing retail, it delivers to exist, to users of cannabis.
Correct.
Adult-use cannabis.
It delivers from existing retail to users of cannabis, to buyers.
Right, or?
Or patients, or?
Or, doesn't it deliver from the vault, or the person at 339 River Street will, will have the products there, and will deliver it from that location?
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. I believe there are two. There's a courier and delivery operator, so I believe, so what this is, is basically home delivery of cannabis. this is, is basically home delivery of cannabis.
Home delivery.
To a retail customer.
Okay, that sounds good.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Green and Fleming.
Two in opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Rush, President.
Our report of the Public Safety Committee, Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. So we met earlier this evening and took up a few petitions. 19921, Counselor Marissa Fleming, on behalf of Fisher Road residents, to request new sign, public lighting, as outlined in the enclosed petition. Those were amended unanimously. 19922, Tom Scharowski, Executive Director, to amend Chapter 16924, entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times, relating to the Boulder Drive as in the enclosed order. That was approved with one in opposition being Counselor Bochman in opposition. 20122, residents of Bella Vista Condos located at 875 John Fitch Highway, and then 20322, residents of Bella Vista Condos located at 855 John Fitch Highway. There were a number of matters before us. The only, the only approval to those brought forward was the approval only of the crosswalk request as funding is made available for that. But that was unanimously approved for that one item. 22922, to amend Section 16925 of the public, of the city code, parking prohibited certain hours on Pleasant Street. That was 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and changing that to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM to reflect the changes in the school schedule. That was approved unanimously. 23122, install rapid flash beacons at the crosswalk on Main at Wallace to preserve safe pedestrian access between the library and institutions, including the senior center, YMCA, Wallace Towers, and Long Joe Middle School. That was approved unanimously. 24322, Counselor Bernie Schultz and Judy Perla, to install yield sign on pole 1615 facing out Monroe Street at the intersection of Fairbanks and Monroe. That was held, that needs an engineering study, and the yield would be to the Fairbank Street sign only. Again, held in committee. 24422, Counselor Derek Cruz, on behalf of Tyrone and Sheila Tines, to request or implement no parking from here to corner, or no parking signs at the corner of Hancock and Summer Street. Existing residents exiting Hancock Street cannot see past the row of cars, and that becomes a safety concern, and that was held in committee as well.
To accept the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Second. I have a motion and seconds. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent.
Mr. President, just on 199-2.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, you, you have an objection on 199?
Yeah, 199.
Okay, all right.
I'm not voting for it, sorry.
Gotcha, gotcha. I thought you had a comment to make. Counselor Squalier, go ahead.
Counselor Van Hasenka was going to propose an amendment to 19922, right?
Yes, so what I saw, I do have an amendment to the proposals. I did not put two and two together because it's also on our agenda as a first reading. I did not realize it was on the Public Safety agenda.
We can take that up in first reading, that's probably the better time.
Okay, so let's just do that, and I apologize, if I had known I was here for the meeting, I should have brought it up then, but I just did not notice.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? We have one in opposition.
Just on 199-2, sir.
Well, the motion is for the entire report, so you have to either support the entire report or oppose the entire report.
You're choking me, you're choking me to death.
I didn't make the motion, Counselor.
All right, I'll vote for it then.
All right, unanimous, thank you. Report of the Public Works Committee, am I correct in assuming this was Counselor Schultz?
Yes, I stepped in for Counselor Fleming, and we took up quite a few petitions on September 27, 2022, Counselor Van Hasenka to install a berm at 26 Whittlemore Street, and that was voted unanimously, given leave to withdraw. The next petition was install rapid flash beacons at the crosswalk on Main Street at Wallace Ave, and that was approved, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, it was approved unanimously. I should say that, I won't say that again, because all of these petitions, they were all, whatever the outcome was, they were all approved unanimously, so I won't say that again.
Okay.
In the interest of time. 23222, Counsel Bernie Schultz and Ron Whedlin of 25 St. Paul Street to build a berm, and also repair the berm across the street at 28 St. Paul Street, and that was, that was approved unanimously.
I'm going to pause you for just a moment and make a request that when we have a motion for this, that item be held out, because I have to accuse myself from it, I live directly across the street.
Okay. So that was approved as well. 23322, Counsel Squalier and Bochman to repair a concrete driveway in front of 186 Daniel Street, and that was approved. 23422, Counsel Squalier and Fleming, Counsel Squalier and Fleming, to repair a sidewalk at 117 Myrtle Ave, and that was approved as well. 23722, Counsel Fleming to repave or resurface the roadway between 7 Pearl Street and 674 Pearl Street, and that was given a leave to withdraw because Counselor, DPW Commissioner Erickson said that it wasn't a good idea for us to be submitting petitions for paving of roads, that we have a process and we should adhere to that process. 24322, we already talked about in Public Safety, that's been, that's a yield sign at Fairbanks and Monroe Street, that's going to be, that's on hold. 24422, Counsel Derek Cruz, residents of Clyde Street for no parking signs, that was given leave to withdraw, oh, pending review by Public Safety Committee, and we reviewed it, and I guess we put it on hold as well at Public Safety. So that, that's a disposition on that one. 08920, Counsel Bernie Schultz and resident Alex Freeman, to remove the no turn on red sign at Centrino Memorial Drive and Water Street, and that was held, again, pending a traffic study, which is ongoing, right now it's being done. 02722, Counsel Derek Cruz, install a street light on Boylston Street, and that was, that was given leave to withdraw. And the last one was 09322, Counsel Sam Squalier, on behalf of resident Nick Haynes, add a four-way controlled stop, and that also is undergoing a traffic study, an ongoing traffic study, so that, we're, Commissioner Erickson on that one, and the other one, the no turn on red sign, he says that we should have a disposition by next meeting, next meeting of the Public Works Department.
Yes.
So that's.
Move to accept the report of the committee.
Second.
Except for 23222.
All right, I have a motion and second to accept the report excluding item 23322.
23222.
Ah, sorry, thank you, 23222. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved, and I'm going to step away for a moment for the final item.
Make a motion to approve 23222.
Check in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's approved.
Orders Finance, we have a request for suspension of the rules on 247 through 24922. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved, or rather, it is suspended. And Mr. Scharowski, would you like to introduce these petitions?
Good evening, councilors, thank you for suspending the rules, I promise it's the last time I'll ask. So the reason being, I think my team's going to have a lot on their plates over the next month or so, and I wanted to make sure we took care of these final items. The three are pretty straightforward. 247-22 will be to pay Pelletier Properties, who acts as our Realtor, and as you all just approved, the sales of Zero Taft Street and 50 Granite Street. This is a commission to help pay for those, sales of those two properties. 24822 is approving an earmark from the Commonwealth of Mass in the amount of $25,000 for the development of a stage at Riverfront Park. We have created our conceptual designs, they've been through a public meeting, and we had actually a celebration last week in partnership with New View Communities to talk about plans for the stage and what we're doing moving forward. The next step, we just are about this close to securing a relationship with an architect, Wilson Butler Architects did take those conceptual designs and turn them into final designs. I'm asking for this additional earmark from Representative Kuschemerik to be accepted today, because if and when we begin this relationship with Wilson Butler, chances are the $50,000 that the council appropriated initially won't quite be enough to meet the requirements for the design of this stage, which is on a contaminated site, which will need to do some borings to make sure that we can be assured of the structural stability of the soil beneath it. And just overall, from what we heard in the public input sessions, the need for kind of acoustic planning as being a part of it, of course, you want to make sure that if we're going to build this fancy new stage, you can actually hear what's happening on the stage, especially when we've got a train running behind it. So we're going to be looking at acoustics, we're going to be looking at the environmental factors, structural stability, and all those things add some additional cost. So this hopefully is one of two earmarks we'll be receiving from the state with Rep. Kuschemerik's help. The second is tied up in an economic development bill that hopefully will get passed in October. And then the last item, 24922, this was an earmark in the budget from Senator Cronin. This is to support the development of market rate housing on the upper stories of properties downtown. We've created a program, Liz Murphy, Housing Development Director, will be overseeing it, that will support market rate housing on vacant properties downtown with a $20,000 grant, maximum of five units per grant, so $100,000 cap. This will be able to support roughly two to three projects downtown. There's a real need for the development of housing in, within the city and downtown specifically, as you all know, as you were part of the zoning, painstaking zoning process of the last 24 months, as we've been working to help support housing downtown, but in order for market rate housing to work, we do need some subsidy to help make it happen. So we're grateful for Senator Cronin's support helping to get this earmark secured, and this will be the, the next step towards releasing this fund, which we aim to release later this week. So happy to take any questions on either of those three items if you have them.
Counselor Bochman.
On 247, Tom.
Yes.
What, we sold the properties to Habitat for what, a dollar?
Correct.
So, am I reading this right, 2,244, or is that $22 and, $22.44?
So what we decided to do, because the whole idea behind an RFP is, it's not an auction, right? It's not going to the highest bidder, and it's not necessarily the goal of our Realtor to get the highest bid, it's, it's, the, the goal is to get a proposal that is feasible, that aligns with the interests of the city, that can actually get developed and built. And in some cases, with the properties we're working with, they're, they're in really difficult shape and require a lot of money to be developed. In this case, at least, there are two vacant parcels in an area of town that housing production is not being driven without some additional support, external to the market, I'd say. So we wanted to, this is my long-winded way of saying, we tied it to assessed values as opposed to the sale price. So we have a percentage, I believe, 3% of the assessed value of, of any property sold with our Realtor.
And then the, on 249, the 290,000, there's no strings attached to that, right? None? You won't have to say if you start developing, you have to put some of these low-income people in and that?
Correct, there's plenty of other resources to help support that kind of housing development, and we're, you know, trying to work across multiple levels to drive production, but in this case, no strings attached, except that the property owner is showing a one-to-one matching support. There's evidence of site control, documentation of good standing, not just here but in other communities, so they're paying their taxes, and there's evidence of that. A development and an operating pro forma to show that they actually have the capability to make these projects happen, and those projects will be profitable in the long run. And then evidence of financial and other local commitments, but no strings attached once the grant is awarded.
Okay, and then 248. Now, we gave a total of somewhere over 200,000 so far, right, or 250,000 we cut so far?
200 from the Republic Services Grant, which is aimed to be more towards the construction side, and then 50,000 from the City Council, which was aimed to support design. And of that, about 9,000 has been expended to support the conceptual design process.
Now, I have a question, I couldn't make the meeting when they had the grant thing the other day, because I was at the Finance Committee meeting at the same time that you had the, the grant ceremony, but I, I heard that they might, they may want to construct bathrooms there?
So, we just wrapped up our open space rec planning process, we're about to put a draft of that seven-year plan out, I'll keep it brief, but one of the main things we heard from the community was the need for more restroom facilities within our parks. That being said, after doing an initial conceptual design, looking at cost estimates, we realized that a restroom in this location is just not cost feasible at this time. So it was part of the original conceptuals, but will not be part of the final design process here.
Okay, it's not going to be part of it, good.
Correct.
That's good, because I'm not in favor of it. Good people won't take care of them, we had them in City Hall and they destroyed them. We got them in Parkview and they destroyed them.
Okay, Counselor.
I'm just telling you.
Bathrooms aren't on the agenda.
Well, I'm just letting people know why I'm, I'm against it.
Okay, well, since it's not before us, you don't need to be for or against it.
Oh, well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is this for all three?
Yes.
Is there anyone who objects to taking all three together?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
One, 247, 248, and 24922 are approved. 250 and 25122 stand referred to Finance. 25222, I have a request from Solicitor Prisiteri for suspension.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension on 25222, is there any objection? Seeing none, it is before us. Mr. Solicitor.
I just defer to the Chair on Financing to approve this suspension.
We did.
Just wanted to confirm that the Chair on Financing approved the suspension, I just did want to defer to him if he wanted to hear this more clearly.
He is giving a thumbs up.
Thank you. So this is a matter that we've reviewed previously, and we're going to conclude the executive session on that shortly, and then this order is, is the follow-up on that matter. We have a very positive settlement on three pending cases, which I believe is in our financial best interest, because it's less than our insurance deductibles would be. And so I'm encouraging the council to approve the order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Just on the motion.
I just want to note, Counselor, please do not address any items that are still pending in executive session.
Oh, all right. I guess I can't address this.
All right. All right, I have a motion and second to approve this order. If there is no objection, take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, councilors.
Next up, we have two loan orders. I'm going to request unanimous consent to waive the reading of them, for the sake of my vocal cords.
So moved.
Thank you. So 22622, this is the loan order for Crocker Elementary. Thank you. So, 226-22, this is the loan order for Crocker Elementary. It is in final reading.
Moved to send it through its final reading.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
It passes 11.
Thank you very much. 227-22 is the loan order for the public library, which is also in final reading.
Moved to send it through its final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
I would have to say yes. It's a lot of money, but I'll say yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
11 pass.
Thank you. Next, we have 253-22, ordered that whereas the city and Nagel Aircraft Incorporated, a Massachusetts corporation, I'm gonna skim over some of the legalese, through Mayor Dina Tally, approve and authorize the execution and delivery of a building lease between the city and Nagel Aircraft, and to authorize all other acts and documents which will be necessary, helpful, or convenient to effectuate and ensure the completion of the building lease, which is attached via hyperlink to the agenda. This will be referred to city property.
Mr. Craig, the Commissioner is here, and personally, I personally believe that it would be better for all the councilors to hear this while we're all here as a group.
Do I, is that a motion for suspension of the rules?
Yes, I'm asking for suspension of the rules, if you don't mind.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
No.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yes.
And Counselor Kuchar.
No.
10 to 2.
All right, motion passed.
9 to 2, sorry.
Thank you. And that is a 2/3 margin, so the matter is, so the rules are suspended. Mr. Kettle, if you would like to present?
Thank you. President Zarella, city councilors, I've got a little bit of a horse throat, so I hope you can understand me. It really is a pleasure to stand here in front of you to talk about Nagel Aircraft today. A little bit of information, they've been operating as Nagel Aircraft for 76 years. 74 of those years were at Hanscom Field. We managed to coerce Joseph Nagle to the Fitchburg Airport two years ago. When he came here, he spent $50,000 of his own money to build his offices within an old hangar. Now, he's brought many, many miles of business to the airport, particularly in fuel sales, because every plane that comes in for a service from him, even from Sao Paulo in Brazil, they buy fuel here. So, the business, the actual fuel sales have gone up tremendously. Now, this lease is for 20 plus 5 plus 5 years, so basically a 30-year lease. Now, once this is signed and approved by the, you guys, and also the Finance Commission, the Property Commission, thank you, he's now interested in building a 7,000-square-foot hangar at the airport, which will bring additional business in. So, it's absolutely fantastic news for the airport, and really prior to the 7 to 9 hangars that hopefully are going to be approved within the next 3 to 4 months. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Mr. Kettle, do we, with Mr. Nagle wanting to increase his presence at the airport, do we have room to accommodate his needs?
Absolutely. 100%. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, thank you. All good news.
Counselor Brochman.
Now, Mr. President, I just want to make it very clear to Mr. Kettle, that I'm not going soft on the airport just because I asked for suspension of the rules. I just want to make that clear.
I think that's quite clear, counselor.
Moved to approve 253-22.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, I will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved, and thank you and congratulations, Mr. Kettle. Next, we have 199-22, an ordinance to amend Chapter 169-24 entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times relating to Boulder Drive, as in the enclosed order. This is in its first reading. Mr. Skroski.
Thank you. And it, just wanted to note, this is slightly different than what originally went in front of the council for the 90-day experimental regulations, which were then extended by 30 days, and also slightly different from what came in front of the Public Safety Committee earlier this evening, because they were still using that experimental set of regulations. So, a few of the differences in what you see in front of you tonight, there's really two main ones. One is we created a prohibited turn onto Cushing Street. It's always been illegal to head south on Cushing Street, but heading north until recently was acceptable traffic movement. So, we added language to prohibit turns on Cushing Street in that direction. At the same time, Commissioner Erickson is working on forming the full petition to actually formally close that road off to vehicle traffic, and the council will be seeing that later on in the fall. So, that's one big change we made. And then, the other one was related to parking. So, we identified a few different locations, both within the project area and slightly outside, in one case, just west of the Upper Common, where the ordinance itself didn't necessarily match up with either signs, parking meters, or both on the ground. So, the, what you see in front of you tonight reflects the reality of what was actually on the ground. And I understand there might be some changes related to that, which I actually agree with, but what we wanted to do is, we knew with the main Boulder project, we had a lot of things that were changing with the new parking regulations. We were bringing a lot of new changes in enforcement, and we didn't want to add another layer of change necessarily without consulting with the council. So, you have the ordinance in front of you. Happy to answer any other questions about the changes you might have.
Solicitor Pushteri?
Just want to make sure that we have a point of clarification. This is a new submittal that came in on Thursday morning and should be in the packet. That's what we're talking about.
Correct, correct.
Counselor Squaya?
Yes. Not that I disagree with the Cushing amendment at all, but where is that listed?
And so, that might be the issue if you're looking at the Public Safety Packet as opposed to the one that was submitted, the Thursday deadline for the new packet. So, yeah, thank you. I can, I can read it off for you if that's helpful. So, it's a, it's a Word document, and specifically, that change is on... Appreciate your patience.
Is it the stop sign on Cushing Street, direction of travel north at intersection of Main Street? Is that?
I don't think so.
It wouldn't be related to a stop sign, no.
Item 2.
Is that under time limit parking?
It's not, no.
Was that page 72 of our packet?
Yeah, so, it actually appears as though that one's not in there. I don't know how it didn't make its way to the final change. It, I can read it from, from a separate document we are working on, if it's something the council will, the council would be amenable to adding, to amend here.
Certainly, I, I would be happy to hear that and entertain an amendment on that.
And, well, and Counselor Van Hazinga, I understand you have some things related to parking. If you want to expound upon that, I could show my work here and figure out what, what I'm missing.
So, in looking at the proposed parking regulations, I did talk to some property owners on Main Street, and look at what is currently in the code and what is being proposed. And Mr. Skroski is correct that there are some areas where the code says one thing, and what has been done in practice is something else. And in looking at how the parking is arranged on Main Street, I think it makes much more sense to follow what the code currently outlines. And this is in reference to the north side of Main Street, west from Blossom Street. So, as proposed, in our proposed changes right now, from Blossom Street to Oliver Street is 1-hour parking. The single block from Oliver to Fox is 2 hours, and then from Fox to Grove Street is 1 hour, and then Grove Street to Academy is 2 hours. My proposal would be to match what is currently in the code, which would make from Blossom Street to Oliver, keep that 1 hour, and then from Oliver all the way to Academy to make that 2 hours. I think this makes sense, because the, the lower section of Main Street between Blossom and Oliver is much more densely developed. It does have a lot more retail uses and grabbing, takeout food places where traffic needs to, or parking needs to turn over more frequently to support those businesses. And they also have the benefit of the Mill Street parking deck for longer-term parking. As you go west from Oliver Street, there are, these uses include offices, a church, dentist, restaurant under construction, places that need a longer-term parking than 1 hour, and that could present a problem for those operators if their customers and visitors can only stay at 1 hour at a time. So, I will make an amendment to amend Section 169-26 of the proposed changes. In that first table, it would eliminate the last 2 lines, and then edit the, the box before that to change Fox to Academy. Then, in the following table, we'd do the same exact thing, to eliminate the last 2 rows and to change Fox to Academy.
Second.
I have a motion and second, and because this includes my office, I'm going to actually have to accuse myself for a third time this evening on this amendment only.
So, we'll just give President Zarella a second to step out of the room.
Do we want to add his amendment to your amendment?
So, we're approving the amendment. Do we want to add Tom's amendment? Well, we can approve this amendment. This can further amend.
I think we'll do the, we'll do it separately, just so that you can participate. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the, of anyone who happens to be interested in the viewing public, I will clarify that the reason I'm not recusing myself from the entirety of the ordinance change is because I feel it is more than broad enough that my particular interests are subsumed within the interests of the city as a whole. That said, we have that amendment, and did...
And this one wasn't an amendment, but just a change from 199-22 from what it originally was when it went to Public Works and Public Safety, when it was submitted for its reading, and thank you for buying me some time. It's in the Word document entitled Section 169-72 entitled Prohibited Turns Shall Be Amended as Follows, and you can see...
I don't have the Word document. Do we, do we get the Word document?
Okay.
Was, was it not submitted?
Aye.
I mean, it's the...
It was in the packet, yes.
It was in the packet?
Yes.
Okay.
What page, please?
I just printed that section of it. I don't have the page number.
It's 60, 169-72.
You can look at that. That was what I was given.
Solicitor Pushteri, did you have something to add?
I think I'm looking at the Word document, submittal email, and I do not see the no right-hand turn on Cushing in that Word document.
So, I'm going to recommend that rather than trying to find it in the document, if the council is amenable, we can just make it as an amendment to what is before us. If Mr. Skroski would like to read off the proposed language?
Sure. So, in summary, the aforementioned revisions to 169-72 entitled Prohibited Turns Shall Now Read as Follows. Name of street, Boulder Drive. I'm reading in columns as you go through the 4 columns here. Name of street, Boulder Drive. Direction of travel, east slash west. Prohibited turn left slash right at the intersection of Cushing Street. So, essentially, if you're going westbound, you cannot turn right onto Cushing. If you're going eastbound, you cannot turn left onto Cushing.
Move that amendment.
Second.
I have a motion and second for, to amend as stated. If there is no objection, oh, I'm sorry, was that?
It's, Counselor Squaya asked what page. It's 62 and 63. That starts it, if you want to have a look at it.
So, I did give it to him.
Thank you, counselor. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is amended as proposed. We now have the ordinance before us as twice amended. Counselor Green.
I just have one clarification on the 20-minute parking that reads from point the south side of Main Street, opposite the Westerly curb line of Wallace Ave, Westerly, to the existing loading zone to provide parking spaces. So, where exactly are, are you on, are you on Main Street? Are you on Wallace Ave? Where, where is that 20-minute gonna be converted now into parking spaces?
Good question. So, it's Main Street, on the south side of the street, opposite of Wallace Ave. So, essentially, it's in front of the library. So, 20-minute spaces to allow for, you know, people to drop off and grab a new book.
Okay, specifically for the library or for any of the business that's in the surrounding area that they can take place in 20 minutes and get it loaded and unloaded?
Correct. Technically, anyone. It's in front of the library, so I think that's, I think that's why the 20-minute status existed there previously. And I think it makes sense to keep it there, and the library director agrees. But yes, anyone theoretically could use it, as long as they're, they're for 20 minutes and not a minute longer.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions or comments?
Move to send the amended 199-22 through its first reading.
All right. Second. I have a motion and second to send 199-22 as amended through its first reading, to be heard in its third reading at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
That will be our third reading?
Yes.
Because tonight was considered our second reading?
First and second.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
Yep.
And Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
11 yeses.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have 228-22 in its final reading, an ordinance to amend the general ordinances, excuse me, general ordinances of the city of Fitchburg, Chapter 44, Section 10, to update the salaries of the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor from respectively $101,67,670 to $103,525 and $69,362.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Shilts.
Yes.
Counselor Squaya.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschmann.
A lot of money, but yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
11 pass.
Thank you. I, I do have to just remind councilors that when we are taking a vote, the only responses that are in order are an affirmative or a negative.
No comments?
No comments. Next, we have 254, 22, Tom Skroski and Liz Murphy to formally approve Mayor Dina Tally's proposed tax increment exemption agreement for 759 to 769 Main Street pursuant to the city of Fitchburg's Housing Development Incentive Program, Market Rate Housing District. That will be referred to Economic Development. Counselor Marcus, 255, 22, Counselor Marcus Dina Tally, on behalf of Fitchburg resident Jacqueline Wetchy, to change the method by which the Board of Health are chosen, from appointive to elective. That will be referred to Legislative Affairs. And 256, 22, PCM Auto Repair and Sales Incorporated, to petition for a Class II dealer's license located at 33 Pritchard Street. That will be referred to Public Safety.
Take a motion or adjourn?
We have some announcements.
Well, we do.
So, first, from Counselor Shilts, the next meeting of the Widow Helping Widow Support Group will take place on Thursday, October 6, 2022, from 4 until 5:30 PM in Room 203 at the Fitchburg State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Shilts will co-facilitate. We have the Stratton Players, along with Putnam Street Lanes. Invite you to Bullaween fundraiser to renovate Lucy's Barn at historic Candlepin Bowling Alley. Costumes suggested, not required. Prizes for best costume, highest score, lowest score, and more. This is Saturday, October 29. Tickets are $20, starting at 7 PM. Five players per lane, three strings. Tickets can be purchased at Putnam Street Lanes, 14 Putnam Street in Fitchburg, which is also the location of the event. And you can email strattonplayers@gmail.com or visit strattonplayers.com to learn more.
Thank you.
Take a motion or adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. We have...
President Zerella?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
President Zerella, this gentleman right here.
Oh, yes, thank you. I would like to thank Tom Skroski for his excellent service to the city of Fitchburg. He is unfortunately leaving us for the best of reasons, but he will be greatly missed, and I think I can speak for all of us when I say that the changes and the legacy that you have created here in Fitchburg in your time with us will endure long, long after you're gone. It's been my pleasure to work with you.
Mine too.
Counselor Zerella, there was one more announcement you forgot about the Ward 1 meeting?
Oh, yes, thank you. It is not on my agenda, but yes, there will be a Ward 1 meeting. That is Monday, correct?
Monday.
Ward 1 meeting will be held here, Monday, the 10th, at 6, 6:30?